Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the April 15th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you to whoever placed the flag back in its former location. May I get a motion to open a continued public hearing for Hutchins-Statsburg Storage LLC?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
As a reminder to the audience, the applicants are seeking approval for the conversion of the former PDQ Manufacturing located just north of here on the east side of nine into a storage facility. This was re-referred to Dutchess County Planning. We actually had the response at the last meeting. Mr. Turner was here. Basically, they discussed that they wanted some changes in landscaping. Those changes had actually been made before it was even sent, but the county hadn't seen it. So, we're ready to take action, but first, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? Any comments from the board? There being none, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this file?
Oh, that'd be me.
Resolution number fifteen dash three A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby adopts a determination of nonsignificance determining that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board makes the following findings with respect to the requested modification of the site development standards to permit upward facing lights on the freestanding sign and to eliminate the requirement for a sidewalk. One, the site is already fully developed and the applicant is making minimal changes to the exterior of the structure. Inclusion of a sidewalk would require the removal of a large amount of asphalt, several parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to resurface an existing, reface an existing sign located on the site, including reusing existing lighting on the sign. Two, there are no potential adverse impacts to the surrounding properties from the elimination of the sidewalk or the proposed lighting. The site is not located in or near a neighborhood and the sidewalk would likely not be utilized at this time. The planning board will reconsider the need for the sidewalk upon further changes or modifications to the site plan. The existing lighting does not spill onto adjacent lot and does not spill onto the street. Three, the applicant could propose downlighting, but it would require modifications to the existing sign infrastructure. Be it further resolved that based on the above findings and the criteria set forth in the town code in section 108, 4.5, the board hereby modifies the lighting standards set forth in section 108 dash 4.5 H2 of the zoning law to permit the proposed upward facing lights and eliminate the requirement for a sidewalk. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the site plan entitled Hutchins-Statsburg Storage Site Plan Zoning Information Prepared by Tinkelman Architecture, P L L C dated February 23rd, 2015, last revised March 27th, 2015, and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan to contain an owner's signature block and a planning board signature block. Three, revision of the site plan to indicate that the upward facing lights on the sign will be completely shielded and shall not spill onto the street. Four, removal of the non-compliant for lease sign and non-compliant temporary sign for winter storage on the site. Five, revision of the plan to replace the sign elevation with a new sign elevation submitted under cover letter dated April 10th, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Turner, would you like a copy of the resolution?
Yes, sir.
You may have mine. And I hope you understood the last condition. We had a sign that was submitted separately that varies from the signs shown on the site plan, and we just need to make sure this is not being done separately by sign permit, but through site plan, what I signed needs to be the final sign with approval.
Correct.
Okay.
So I figured that's why there's another thing at the end of the meeting for this specific design.
But we don't need to do that now because we got it under the site plan. So, I just incorporated that in without changing the agenda, so you don't have to stay.
Okay.
Thank you. It's good to see you again and nice to work with you. Second continued public hearing is for Camp Victory Lake. May I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
As a reminder to the audience, the applicants are seeking basically approval for a system that was approved. Oops, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The applicants are seeking sort of a reapproval of an existing facility that's already up and operating. Mr. Rini, do you have anything to add for this evening?
Just to answer the one question that was asked, that there's a storage building on the site and what that was used for. And I was told by the camp that that's used for storage of tents and chairs and...
For some reason, you're not being picked up?
Yeah, it doesn't even sound like it's on.
Oh. Let me check.
Try tapping on it.
It's off.
No, it's off.
Not from here.
Stop, everybody. There he is.
Technical help needed.
Where'd that come from?
Where'd that come from? Oh, I just heard that, yeah.
Thank you. My apologies, Mr. Rini. Now you can speak.
Okay. The question that was asked that was on the table was, what is the existing storage building used for at the camp? And they store tents and chairs and those sort of things that they use for their outdoor events.
Just a reminder, this was a question Ms. Moss asked. It was shown, but it wasn't labeled what the use was. And again, as we've noted for the record, in the past record, this is a site that has periodic spikes in usage. So, when they have, there's 6,000 people that are going to need to have a more equipment that's being used for my day-to-day purpose. So, storage units would seem normal there. Any comments from the board?
No.
We were waiting to, what happened was last time we could have taken action, but we had referred this both to Department of Health and to DEC, and they've now passed 30 days. We've had no response, so we're free to take action tonight. There being no comment from the board, is there any comment from the public about this application? There being none, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this resolution?
I have that. Okay. Let's see. Resolution reaffirming prior secret determination of nonsignificance and granting site plan approval, ah, site plan amendment approval. Okay, let's get this right. Camp Victory Lake, WWTP, April 15th, 2015, resolution 15 dash 4A. Whereas, 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 there are no material differences between the approved site plan and the as-built plan, which has been submitted for reapproval, which would warrant additional secret review. And whereas pursuant to section 239M of the general municipal law, the planning board referred the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, which responded on March 24th that it was a matter of local concern. Whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its prior secret determination of nonsignificance issued on August 16th, 2006. Be it further resolved that the planning board approves the as-built site plan entitled Camp Victory Lake, WWTP, access road and building as-built exhibit prepared by Rena Engineering, P L L C dated February 19th, 2015, last revised March 12th, 2015, and authorizes the chair to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow, and two, submission of evidence of application for petroleum bulk storage permit for the site or letter from applicant's engineer indicating that a permit is not required.
Second.
Any further discussion? Just to note, the second condition, we don't, you don't cross the DEC thresholds based on the petroleum that's stored just by the sewage treatment plant. But we asked Mr. Rini to undertake an inventory of the whole site because it's supposed to be cumulative. So, I believe he's talked to the applicants about doing so, and if he determines that it's not hitting the threshold, then that's okay. Otherwise, we just need to know that they've applied for it, so this won't hold up anything too far. Anything from you, Mr. Rini? Anything else?
No, we plan on, my office plans on making a full inventory of the site, and we'll document every tank that we find, and if we're over the threshold, we'll submit the application in.
Thank you. This is again just for safety purposes and for their knowledge. There being no further discussion, may I get a, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rini, would you like a copy of the resolution, too?
Yes, please. Thank you.
You may have mine. Thank you, and it's a pleasure working with someone so thorough. Thank you for paying attention to all the details we ask you to.
Thank you.
We would hope that, too. We like to see applications before farmers. I'm going to change the agenda for a moment and go directly to Venture Lake Homeowners. We have sign permit recommendation from the zoning administrator. The sign that's proposed is code compliant. Before I ask whoever has this resolution to read it, can someone tell me where this is exactly?
This is across the street from the New Dollar General.
Gee, just before the, you know, the Delian?
It's just across the street from the New Dollar General. There's a manufactured home behind there. It's just north of the Hidden Brook Estates.
Thank you. Was this always called Venture Lake? I just didn't note how to name it.
Yes.
There we are, because I think it's a very attractive sign. That's the reason why I asked.
It's set way back off the road. It's like 50, 70 feet back off the road, too.
Okay, that's why I hadn't noticed.
It's at the entrance of it.
It's, I think it looks nice. So, who has this resolution?
Paul overworked me. Resolution number 15 dash 12. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board finds that the proposed sign is fully in compliance with the requirements of the code regarding signage and recommends issuance of a sign permit.
Any second? Right, there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next on the agenda is, I believe it's Manche Motors rather than Mancy. The applicants are seeking permission to erect a sign that's sort of already there, where the, from a Brady Motors, I believe it was, existed up on nine north of here. In answering anybody's potential question about whether the use had lapsed, as it turns out, the owners had kept the license to sell cars current. Assuming there was no one in it, that's considered to be a use that hasn't lapsed because they kept the potential for it for a year. So, we have a recommendation. It's code compliant. Who has this file?
I do. Resolution recommendation for issuance of one sign permit pursuant to town code section 108 dash 24 point 3A, parentheses 4, parentheses D. Resolution number 15 dash 11. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board finds that the proposed sign is fully in compliance with the requirements of the code regarding signage and recommends issuance of the sign permit. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the sign permit for Statsburg Storage. That does not have to be on there now anymore. The next one on the agenda would be, uh-huh, would be Sereno Realty. This is to change the former Century 21, Sereno Realty, to down standalone. I think Senator Sereno is dropping her affiliation with Century 21. Everyone's had a chance to take a look at the sign that's proposed?
I have.
It's code compliant. We have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, and Ms. Dexter, you had a question, I believe, that probably should be put into the record?
Yes. I had noted that there had been another older sign on the south side of the building facing Town Hall here, and I asked if that was going to be taken down and replaced or, because I only saw the sign request for one sign on the front east-facing wall. And Tad responded that, actually, in fact, they've taken that sign down, and that they had said that they might want another sign there, but they had not applied for one. So, for right now, it's just the singular sign facing Route 9.
I believe that the way the signs, you're allowed to all signs, but you have a maximum based on your linear footage?
Right. She needed to recalculate that under the new sign code because those signs were put up under the old sign code.
Correct. So, this is, in other words, just one sign is going up, and it's the one sign that we will place, the front that faces Route 9. Who has this resolution?
I have this resolution, and I'm going to read the "whereas's" because it covers that particular item. Resolution recommending issuance of one sign permit, April 15th, 2015. Resolution number 15 dash 14. Whereas the applicant, Sue Sereno, on March 30th, 2015, submitted application for one replacement wall sign, and whereas the application is for the replacement of two existing wall signs showing the business owner. And whereas the planning board has received a letter from the zoning administrator indicating the sign is code compliant. And whereas the proposed sign will not be lit, and whereas the sign will be visible from Route 9, and the planning board must make a recommendation to the zoning administrator regarding the issuance of a sign permit. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board finds that the proposed sign is fully compliant with the requirements of the code regarding signage and recommends issuance of the signing permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next one on the agenda is for Neshawat. The applicants are seeking a waiver of site plan for a pre-existing or already-built retaining wall and deck. It should be pointed out, just for the record, that this is near another site where a retaining wall was put up without a building permit, and Mr. Sotero, our town engineer, our town engineer and planning board, engineering consultant, is here. In the case of Doran, the other, the wall that's nearby there, can you use, can you explain the terminology again? It's not load-bearing, but it was, that would have caused that to require a building permit, that fence, the stone wall that's there? And since Mr. Sweet is here, can you speak into the microphone for us?
I don't remember, actually. On Doran, yeah, I remember, you know, the site, but I don't remember.
It's something about, it was a huge retaining wall?
Yeah.
In front of the...
The White Flips of Dover, I think.
Yeah.
Because of the height, needing a stamped plan for...
No. I think, I think what it was, excuse me, I think what it was, was something about that the house, you know, the pressure from the house wouldn't have an impact on the wall to push out the wall. The wall was out far enough from the house where there wasn't any load-bearing impact from the house itself that would have an effect on the wall.
Okay.
Something, it had to do with something like...
And in this case, the, the other case, there was a danger that the wall could have fallen down on the house below. In this case, the wall is, they received a variance for the height, but the wall collapsed, would actually collapse back in on the house, if you had a chance to take a look at it. And they also built a deck that is different than what was shown on the site plan, and they're seeking a waiver because they're in the statewide area of scenic significance, which requires site plan review. Well, had a chance to take a look, it doesn't really change the look of the house any, and you can't see it from the river, so...
And this is the Neshawat that's on Hyler Drive?
Correct.
On Hyler. The newer Neshawat.
Yeah.
So, who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you, Chris.
Site plan waiver, town code section 108 dash 9.4C2, resolution number 15 dash 13. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Victor Neshawat on April 10th, 2015, for the property located at 84 Hyler Drive, Hyde Park. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the amended file entitled Neshawat Residence regarding the specific request as submitted on April 10th, 2015, and is specified in the building permit application, an erosion, instead of in control permit application for this property.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Let's go back up for a moment on the agenda to Jeffrey Grove Estates. The applicant's, applicant is seeking an extension of site plan approval. This would be, recall, this is a hybrid application. Part of it that was approved was 38 townhomes, and there were nine single-family homes. The single-family homes were the case for subdivision. Site plan approval is only for the townhomes. That's required under our code. Mr. Kaufman, the applicant has not had a chance to start on it, although part of our discussion, sorry, Mr. Kaufman, been here, would be that what he needs to do before he can start construction is to set bonds. And we had a letter from Mr. Sotero recommending a specified bond amount for certain parts of the infrastructure. That includes basically the road and associated stormwater improvements.
Right.
But one of the questions that we had in the last few days was, when we do these, normally to set the bonds, you also have the bond, in this case, we have a sewage treatment plant, for the sewage treatment plant, because that's part of the infrastructure, and also he would need to bond with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority for the extension of the water.
Waterline extension, right.
Want to add to that?
So, you know, the concern we've had in the last few days, and I sent the applicant an email yesterday, but we haven't heard, heard back from him yet. As far as, you know, the bonds go, I had, I had asked him, you know, "Look, we, we have come up with an amount for, you know, the road, but you really need to post the other bonds," as, you know, the chairman said, "because what's, what's, what good does posting a bond for construction of, you know, the road, because you're not going to get a building, a building permit for anything until the sewage treatment plant, you know, is bonded, and, you know, the water line extension, you know, is bonded, because obviously, you're not going to build, build townhouses if you don't have sewer, you know, or water there." So, I asked him to clarify what his, what his intentions are. We've had several conversations with him. We've had, you know, a meeting with him, and, you know, "We just want to avoid something that the project would be started, and then the land cleared, some preliminary grading going on, and then, you know, it stops." And I don't think anybody wants, you know, to see that, be a big, you know, eyesore up in that area. And so, I asked him, you know, to clarify what his intentions are, because he keeps saying, "I want to get started. I want to get started. I want to post, you know, the road bond," but it's like, "Okay, what about the other couple, you know, bonds?" So, I think that, you know, you guys can decide, I assume they're going to go ahead with the extension. But I, I mean, I think, you know, like at this point, until we hear back from him, that I would recommend that you hold off on approving the amount of, you know, the bond, so we don't kind of start, like in motion, this, you know, bond, you know, process, because I think we need to, you know, to weed out some of the other things that may be going on. So, and maybe he'll say that, "Oh, yeah, you know, I got planned on, like posting everything," but then, okay, well, you know, we should get that process going for the transportation corporation bond, and he's got to work separately with the County Water and Wastewater Authority. So, I just think we should, like, avoid any potential issues or conflicts and make sure everything is done all at once.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Sotero? I also wanted to just raise a quick issue that Pete had put into an email. When he was working on the other side of the desk, so to speak, for Adams in...
Yeah, Wappingers.
In Wappingers, I'm sorry, the new Adams. The town required a restoration bond. Is that how you termed it?
Yeah, it was a restoration bond.
Without naming a specific project here, we have one further up on the east side of Route 9. It's a subdivision. That work was started, and now it's stopped, and it's created some erosion problems.
We have an eyesore, too.
It's an eyesore. And had, in discussions with Victoria, our attorney, had we required in the original approval, the, to put some, to put up some money for a restoration bond, then the town could go through when these projects stop, maybe because of the economy or whatever, and at least stabilize the situation, so you would not have problems where taxpayers are having to pay now to go up for, because of literally water and dirt coming down to our roads. You'd have some money to tap into that. So, I'm mentioning this to everybody because I'm going to explore it with the town attorney. I'm not certain if it would need to be put into the code. Victoria wasn't sure, certain of it.
Yeah, I just think it's something, given the economy and the way things are, I mean, you know, that, you know, the worst thing that can happen is people start the work, and then even though, even though we would have, you know, a bond on it, you know, any town is not going to go in, let's say, for instance, on, you know, this particular project, you know, Groves. If he went in and, you know, he had all the bonds posted, everything was good, went in and started working, and whatever reason, just, you know, "I can't, I can't, like, finish it," and, you know, it's left. You know, the towns, any town, are most likely not going to go in and spend the bond money and build, like, a road that...
Or a sewage treatment plant.
Or a sewage, or a sewage treatment plant if there's no houses or townhomes that are going to be built. So, you know, what do you do if, if that case happens, where, whatever reason, I run out of money, you know, I have a heart attack, you know, whatever, you know, and it's left like that? I don't, I don't believe, I'm pretty confident, that you can't use the bond for the road to go in and, you know, clean up a little bit, seed, seed it, you know, like emolts it, make sure the, you know, a road's control, and try to make it look semi, you know, presentable. You can't use, you know, the road bond money, you know, for that.
It's just for the road.
Michael, I do have a little knowledge in this arena, going down into the Virginia area, and one of the things they do, it is codified, because you get into the whole question, "Well, how long has the property been abandoned?" or "The project been abandoned?" Because before the town uses this, I guess I'll call it restoration or sunset money, this is one of the terms that have been used, you absolutely have to have something like that codified, because there is a time duration involved in that. So, it does require...
Well, I mean, yeah, you would have to give, you would have to give the, you know, the owner every opportunity to restart or...
Of course.
Take, take, take care of the problem, but then after a certain point, if they're not responsive...
Right. And that's what the code has to do, is to quantify what that certain point is.
And I want to make sure, this is not meant to say we're going to make you even pay more before you get to start, but there has to be some sort of threshold. These usually happen on larger projects where money can be, you know, tight. So, you don't want to tie up money in advance, that they have to go out and seek even more. But at the same time, our citizenry deserves some protection from, as you said, an eyesore, and also from us having to use taxpayer dollars to clean up, you know, private development mess, so to speak.
Well, and there are ways to do it. I mean, if you had, if you had, like, a bond amount that you set for a project of, like, a million dollars, let's say, I mean, you could say, "Okay, look, let's, let's, like, reduce that by 10%, 15%, 20%, whatever that, you know, you think, and let's put that money into, like, a restoration bond."
Sure.
And then only take the road bond for the, like, remainder. So, you know, you're not making the person come up with more and more and more money, but at least you have some money up and, up in front that's set aside in a separate type of bond, and...
And I reiterate, the South does a very good job with these sunset provision things.
So, I guess my question is, what you've partially answered is that we're talking about an additional bond, like a restoration bond or restorative bond that would allow, in certain events, to go in and stabilize where it's not. Is that anything that we could consider for this applicant?
I asked the question...
We've been, I mean, we've, we've had bonds before with this particular applicant.
It's because...
But it just kind of worries me that, you know, without the sewer and the water bonded, what are they moving ahead with?
That's exactly what I'm trying to find out.
Right.
So, we will, we're not going to consider that resolution tonight, and...
But having said that, though, Anne, to answer, you know, your question, you know, perhaps if we're able to get all this, like, resolved, then he declares his, like, intentions and says, "Oh, yeah, you know, I'm going to go ahead and, you know, I'll go ahead and post everything," and we have, like, a timeline to post all those, so it all comes, you know, together at once. Perhaps if legally we can come up with, like, a way to say, "Okay, you're going to have a bond of one and a half million for, you know, your road," you know, "if legally we can work something out, well, as I said before, maybe we reduce that a little bit and take out, you know, you know, a restoration bond if he's, like, agreeable to it, and if legally we can work something out, maybe we do have that opportunity to do it." Now, we'll just have to see.
I think what I'd like to do is maybe take a little bit of your time and get this into a workshop before the town board. Because I don't want Victoria researching this at the expense of Jeffrey Groves, when it's something that would be larger for all projects.
It's a town, it's a town-wide.
It would change the town attorney.
Yeah, no, and you. Pete, have you seen the other municipalities going in that direction?
Uh, like I said, Chris, the only experience that I had personally was when we did the, the Adams Farrakhan Farms project down in Whoppingers, and honestly, I don't remember if that was, the restoration bond was in, you know, their code. They just asked for it, and honestly, the Adams said, that's fine. I mean, it was, for that site down there, and it was a pretty big site, I think it was like $25,000, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's like a bond, so they're not putting it all up in cash. So, I mean, it wasn't overly, like, onerous.
Well, I think it's a good idea, I just wasn't sure if that seemed to be the new trend.
Yeah, it's hard to say. I mean, I don't.
Robert's right, they've been doing it in the South for a while.
Yeah.
Like in Florida, in particular, in Virginia, I know both have laws like that. I can take a look at some laws to have, to send to the town board first in preparation, and particularly in Whoppinger, to see what.
I mean, I know in some of the towns that, I don't think, Town of Poughkeepsie, I mean, I can ask around our office, too. I mean, you know, there's other folks that represent other, you know, municipalities, and honestly, I'm not sure Whoppingers had it in their code, but again, the applicant didn't really have any, you know, issue with it.
I was thinking if other towns are doing it, it might be easier to bring it in.
Oh, sure, I understand, yeah.
Yes.
You know what, I'll send, I'll send an email around to, to the other engineers in our office who deal with other towns here and up in, you know, you know, like, all over the place, to see if they know of anything that's in any of, you know, the codes that they work with.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll ask that tomorrow.
Thank you so much for that, and thanks, Board, for asking intelligent questions and making good comments. So may I get a motion instead of public hearing for the request for the extension of site plan approval for the May 7th meeting, I think it is, May 6th, May 7th, sorry?
Oh.
Read a calendar.
Allow all you people with your phones.
Leave it in the corner. I have one. Can you find my calendar on?
The steps.
The six. May I get a motion to.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, may I get a motion to release escrow for Biott Russo for the engineer planner at $765.20, and the attorney of $112.75.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And has everyone had a chance to read the letter that Mr. Rogers requested we send out in support of his project for converting the hobo into an assisted-care facility?
Yes.
Just, again, for the record, Ted had some concerns. This is not in support of his project as approved. He'd like to expand it a little. I had a back-and-forth e-dialog with Mr. Rogers and explained to him that this would A necessitate getting an area variance from the ZBA, because he already exceeds scale for the neighborhood business district, which he's aware of. B would then need site plan approval, which he said he's fully aware of, and I said, and that means I also have to re-refer it back to DC Planning, to Department of Transportation, and Department of Health, and if you're adding beds, whatever you've been working on for your septic might need to be expanded. He said he understood all that, and so he would still like to have our letter of support. And just for the record, in speaking to Ms. Palladaro, I just need to state that this does not in any way express that we would somehow have pre-approval for whatever he would propose for the extension, the increase and expansion of the space, because we haven't seen any of the details yet. He did, by the way, just tell me that they'd be looking to expand toward the east or the rear of the building, so it wouldn't be anywhere closely encroaching on the green space that we have up front or anything else.
Good.
So may I get a motion to authorize me to send this over to the New York State Department of Health?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained or nays?